...tax rate.
Yeah, it was a great hit, sir.
And the first item is, again, is item number two, which is discussion regarding 2015-2016 Economic Development Corporation budget.
Okay, I provided markets to the councilmen. You've got two. You've got one for the EDC and one for the CDC. Just kind of keep in mind, EDC and CDC share a few of our expenses, and that would be the lease, the electric, phone and internet, wages, and office supplies. A big accomplishment this year for the EDC is we paid off our rail spur. So that will be $2,000 more a month that we'll have to spend. Starting at the top at the income, that's the figure that Frank came up with, the projection based on what the city expects to receive in sales tax. And I'll just go down it. The interest on the RLF, that's our revolving loan fund that we have at Texas Star. We have funds in that account. The revolving loan funds are loans that we have given out to businesses. And Solly's paid off their business loans, and we now currently have $70,000 in that revolving loan fund that we can loan out to small businesses in town. Offered in is still currently paying their loan, and that's where the interest, that's where the 734-59 is coming from. The next expenses, of course, would be the payroll. Accounting expense that is the 950 is for the audit, our portion of the audit. Advertising, for the EDC, they have advertising for the leader of 150. The International Council of Shopping Center, we chose not to budget that in this year because we haven't done the last two years. Print advertising, if we need to advertise anything as far as the, I think, brochures or something. Mileage would be for board members to go to seminars or workshops. Of course, the communication is our phone and internet. That would be EDC's portion of the expense. TEDC is the Texas Economic Development Council. That's our dues. We're a member that, that's $500. EDC pays them, they take on that expense. TEDC, really valuable information from them. They put on seminars and mudinars that I and the board members like to attend. IEDC is the International Economic Development Council, and they chose not to be a part of that. Sales tax assurance, that is our portion. The city also pays a big chunk of that. That's for to make sure that the sales tax are collected properly. They provide information, a real useful service that we have there. Our EDC website, where that discusses that. EDC training, that's more funds for my board if they need to do some training. Likewise, in seminars and conferences. Insurance, we have, we have insurance on the contents of the office in case there's a fire because we're just paying the lease and something happens to our items. I think that our, the ladies we're leasing from recovered those items for us. And of course, the board members, they have liability insurance, and they've asked that I obtain liability insurance as well. So that's the estimate for me. The lease, that is EDC's portion. Label fees, we have, we're asking for more funds this year because we've had several projects where we've asked you to review and to draft documents, and we anticipate more projects. So we want to be ready for attorney's fees, so we're asking for $24,000. Office cleaning occasionally. The window cleaners come and clean the outside windows. But as far as the office cleaning, Dottie, myself, and I'm going to ask the chamber person to share in the cleaning of the office. Computer maintenance, that's just in case something goes wrong with our computer or we contact Grayson Collin Communication, and they assist us with that. Industrial Park. We need to keep our park, Industrial Park, so that's for mowing, tree trimming. We recently had sign damage. That's in case something happens at our industrial park, but the city won't be up those expenses.
Did, the truck that hit that, did we get?
I have no idea what happened. It was a head run, or I would have my pursuit myself after then.
Has anybody contacted Fox Cow Caterpillar to see if there's any other trucks?
No, but I don't imagine, it was in the middle of the night. Because I drive by there every day, and early that morning when my husband came home from work, he drives a train, so sometimes he comes in at 3:00 hours. He goes, "Somebody has a sign." So it happened in the middle of the night, so.
It might be worth a call to them just because if they don't know any better, they're not going to, they probably don't even know who to tell.
Yeah.
You know. But I almost do go and bet you it's a truck driver.
And there's our office supplies. We've got it broke down into postage, miscellaneous supplies, which would be paper, pens, just your regular office supplies. Smog equipment over 500, or under 500, and last year we used that to buy vacuum cleaner. And then over 500, should one of our printers or something break, well, not a printer, I say on cost that much. If some of our bigger supply, bigger office equipment, if something goes wrong with that, or like our phone system, for example, that would be something over $500, and it's obviously $1,000 set aside for that. This year, our board has decided to market EDC. So what we're going to do is we can buy cups and put our logo on there. And with prospective businesses coming to town, we have meetings with many roters, commercial roters, business developers, but doing something that they can remember as buying. Also, they, we're going to get some little, little hats with our names on it. We keep these at the chamber table, and when newcomers come in, there's a variety of information, cards, pamphlets, different people that are chamber members. They take the bag and they deliver that information. Also, I will take it with me when I go to the state fair next month to represent Van Alstine as a certified retirement community. So I'll have information publicly about the seniors there. Just general information about Van Alstine. There's our utilities. Payroll, my board approved 5% for me as an increase in my salary. Dottie Izzy, y'all probably seen her at the council meetings. She's very active in the community. She's now my new teammate. Yeah, she's pretty awesome. Initially, when we hired her, we hired her at 10 hours a week, at $10 an hour. I needed a little bit more time, and I could use more than 10 hours a week. So I requested of my board 20 hours a week as needed. I mean, when she, if there's nothing for her to do, she's happy just to leave. She really doesn't need the job, but, so she doesn't do 20 hours, she wants to do 20 hours. And I also asked to give her a raise because actually we couldn't afford to pay her. She's so good. But anyway, her salary's been, we'd like to up her salary to $12 an hour. So that's the EDC. Any questions?
Your, your actual so far in your legal expenses, yeah, man?
In fact, I'll be going to, we, last year we only allocated $500, so we've used all of that. So I'll be going before city council, at our next city council meeting, to request more funds out of 2014, 2015 to pay Ms. Ford's fees. And I think that we're probably looking at plus to $3,000. I've got most recent bill, so I'll be asking city council to approve paying her, paying the balance before October.
Do you want to tell them why it's hot so hard this year?
Because we're using Julie for, she's helped us, she drafted the lease agreement with a prospective customer at our rail spur. We have a, a business here in town that wants to keep its business here in town, and she's assisted me in drafting, this is like a business retention expansion. We want to keep our, our businesses here in town, so she's helping me do something that the economic development wants to present to council to give them permission on.
So these are new things, but they're documents that can be reused over and over again. So it's like, you know, capital out there for the EDC.
And these lease agreements, they're not simple things. I mean, this is many, many pages, pretty involved, legalistic.
Right. In fact, the EDC agreement that I initially drafted for the business here in town for the business retention and expansion, I mean, I'm new at this. I definitely needed Julie's help. I had holes in it. So she and I have been working together and coming up with a document that covers the EDC.
Has the use of our legal been pretty steady throughout the fiscal year so far, or has it just picked up a lot lately?
It's picked up this year, a lot, yes. So we wanted to be sure and have plenty. And in the past, the city has picked up a lot of the attorney fees. So, I mean, she's doing more than just giving us advice on, well, you can't do this project or you can do this project. She's actually doing attorney work on documents and giving us more detailed advice.
Thank you. The CDC?
Yes, or, yes. This one's much smaller, but smaller size. I'm really proud of my CDC. As you know, CDC does quality of life projects. So basically, our, you know, we, when I go get a check from the city, both EDC and CDC have the same amount, so that's what you're looking at, at the, the sales tax revenue. The interest income comes from, right now, we have a pretty good size bank account, so we're getting fees on the balance of our checking account at Landmark. Advertising. Percent to the Texas Development Corporation handbook, both EDC and CDC can use 10% of their projected income for advertising. We can also take whatever we get and use before the year prior and add that to the advertising expense, and that's where you get the $6,100. We use advertising when I do, when I pay Laura for the website for any work that she does, that comes out of advertising, and any advertising that CDC wants to do. The Chamber of Commerce has come to us wanting advertise, assistance in paying for advertisement for the fall draw, and then they have a new project, I believe it's Taste of Highway Five or something like that, that they plan to do in May. So that's where that will come from. And of course, the public hearing notices anytime we need to do a public hearing, we have to put it in the paper, so that's where that fee comes from. The salaries, as you see, they're the same as what the CDC's was. Bookkeeping, just in case I need a little assistance with quit books or something like that, that's what the $100 is for. Again, for the audit. And then IEDC, EDC didn't pay for that, so CDC is going to pay for the International Economic Development Council. So that's where the 385 is coming from. Same thing on the sales tax assurance, that's a cost that we help with to collect taxes and get information on our taxes. Some of the projects were presented to my board in the last few board meetings. The Parks Project came to us with their wish list, and I discussed some of these at city council, I can run down it again. They wanted to do some work at North E Builder Park. North Park, they needed a merry-go-round. Forest More Park, a playground, swing set, mulch at the playgrounds, landscape timbers, bleacher shade covers, a plaque at, a plaque at the North Bridge. And then on the East Build at McKinney Wilson, they needed to expand, looks like the parking lot or something. But anyway, the total of their projects was $65,676, and the CDC approved $50,000 of that. Like on the bleacher shade covers, Dottie and I are looking into grants that could possibly cover that, so. And Dottie and I will be doing that on other projects as well, seeing what kind of grants are out there for the parks. So that's what the Parks Board has requested. The contingent projects, of course, if they don't bring them to us during the budget time, we don't know what they are. So if anybody else comes to us wanting, requesting funding on projects, we set aside loans for that. And for contingent projects, we have $45,000. And the hike and bike trail, the city has applied for a grant, and that would be this part of the city's portion should Dottie award with that grant, or the city pay that.
Did you have a question for me?
No, unfortunately. The facade infrastructure fund, that's a new project that we're going to do this year. This is Tim Lee's baby. She went to a sales tax workshop and heard of this, of this project that, that. So she asked me to research it a little bit. And what it is, is improving the appearance of the facades of various businesses in town, thereby increasing property value, the physical appearance, making someone, you know, making it more.
Spinning.
Yeah, so that they would want to come in and shop at your, at your shop or whatever business that you have. So I'm still drafting that together for the board to look at. But it's going to be something like, they, that we award up to $5,000 for a project, but in order to get that $5,000, that has been $10,000, and that $10,000 has to be spent. And after they show us the expenses, then we would grant them the $5,000 based on their approval, their completed work. It would have to be outside, they can't do new construction. It would just have to basically be on the facade or just in front, windows, no new Computer maintenance and repairs. Dottie needs a new computer. Last year, EDC paid for my new computer that I got money slow. So this year, CDC is going to pay for Dottie's computer. And the rest are just general expenses that CDC shares with the EDC. I might add on the park project, the $50,000, we've just set that aside. They will need to come to us each time that they're ready to do a project, let us know exactly what they're going to do. And by that time, they have worked with Steve White on the bids. So he'll basically be overseeing the projects and approving them as they're completed.
Just looking at this sheet, for instance, looking at 605. And then I guess this, this figure down here, is, is supposed to be a total? Is that, is that a total for 605?
Right. The 21, yeah, the $6,000, something would be Dottie's, the $14,000 would be mine, to complete my salary plus the 247-50. That 247-50, I completed my classes. I have 1,120 hours with OU, that Economic Development Institute, so I'm now qualified to set in for the certification exam, and that's CDC's portion of the fee for me to set in on that exam.
Well, I'm just wondering, I mean, just a quick adding up, if some of these doesn't seem to equal that figure right there, is there, is there a difference? Is this total arrived at differently?
So are you saying that the 14, 795 plus the 62, 40, that's not adding up?
Well, all right.
See, that's a total, that's a total of mine, development, development, and my wages.
Okay.
Does that make no sense?
It does. I guess the line was a little faint, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, this is so small.
All right.
Did you, you don't happen to have what you spent this past year? I think if, while just looking at the, like, the parks projects, and you said that money's set aside, did we have money set aside this past year that didn't get used?
It got used because they came back to us for the parking lot at Forest More, and we went into the contingent area.
So all of your budget money is getting used?
For the most part, like the chamber has the railcar, they haven't used their full $20,000. So we have put that, and I did write my balance sheets, right now, out of the $20,000, oh, and I'm mistaken, Russell, Parks hasn't used 487-05 from the prior year. So for the most part, yes, we use them. Railcars, it's not on here because they didn't use last year, so we set it aside and I'll argue and, and we have 8,800 to use on the railcars.
So if they don't, that $400, they don't use that, should it not reflect on this budget? So if you're giving them a $50,000 allowance set aside for them to use, wouldn't that be, you need to move that money forward that's already, that they haven't used?
For the most part.
Does that make sense?
Yes, for the most part, Parks Board does use it.
It would be available to the situary liability.
So it's a separate account, so it would need to be addressed this way?
Yes, you need to, we need my balance sheet.
We have our balance sheet, we can see how it works.
I just would like to, I think my biggest thing, especially with parks, is encourage them to use all the money because they're in desperate need.
I didn't boys away.
Seems like I can find a way to use it.
Thank you. Also, this does reflect $200,000 worth of funds that's in the bank.
Right.
That can be used or anything you want to use.
Right, we have the $250,000 in the bank.
And restricted coming this time?
It's in the general.
No, that is safer.
That's why you see that they get a number.
Well, some of that might be for the railcar or something.
The EDC has a positive ending balance there. They're still trying to put money aside for the future, but CDC is negative because that kind of involves a lot of those financial issues.
Yeah, each and all.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, discussion regarding 2015-2016 fiscal year, City of Van Alstine General Fund budget.
Just wanted to go over, I'm starting to step in front of them. Just want to go over the highlights for what we're planning for FY '16. We've had, everybody's got the packet, we've gone over the individual, one-on-one budget, and I know that it's changed since building on that slightly. Robert had asked a couple of questions, and I'll get to those here in just a minute. This year, looking at, Jennifer, if you could go to the 400. Looking up at the revenue, what's anticipated for property tax for 2016 versus 2015, it's only an increase of $63,277.34. The majority of that increase on the property tax with the same property tax rate is, is going to be over NIS in our debt, and that's $326,367.94. So the majority of it's not coming into the general fund for maintenance operations. So, majority of it's not coming into the general fund for maintenance operations. It's to cover our debt on equipment and needed, needed vehicles. There was a question, also in revenue on admin, in the mixed drink tax. Just, it was a measly sum, but it's $500. We typically have budgeted that, budgeted that. It hasn't been identified. It's been miscellaneous revenue. We're starting to break that out so we can start tracking it. And that way, y'all can identify where we're going over the course of, in the future. That way, you're just not seeing it as miscellaneous revenue and don't identify where that money came in. Also down in miscellaneous revenue, Kenehan hit on their portion of the sales tax assurance. CDC pays $750 and EDC pays $750 in total. And so, within miscellaneous revenue, that's that reimbursement from CDC and EDC that pays for the full amount of the sales tax insurance. And also, the other portion is the insurance trust fund that council agreed to set up. And that'll pay us dividends over time as we grow. Currently, we're anticipating $2,000. It could be more this year, but as the organization grows and gets bigger, that insurance trust fund will see more revenue over time. Let's see. Overall, in the total revenues, this year versus last year, that's gonna be an increase I'll scroll down here in just a second. But the main thing that I want y'all to identify is, that's not primarily coming out of the sales, the property tax from the residents. It's coming out of other areas, and that's gonna help offset some of the other functions that other departments do that doesn't necessarily generate revenue, but provides them respect to the community. Based upon the previous talks and the one-on-ones, anybody on council had a, had a question or anything they wanted to ask? I know the only, only person I had to cut short was Mayor Cooper. And once we get to the Police Department going forward, there may be some extra questions. So it's not that Mayor Cooper's asking a bunch of extra questions. It's just because he didn't get the extra time to be able to answer all of his. But does anybody, again, does anybody have any questions about the revenue? Okay. Highlights in the expenses on admin. On postage, we talked quite a bit about us utilizing utility billing and the website for notifications and not necessarily having to utilize postage so much. And that's out of just going down $500 bucks. The only portion of, admin pays all postage for all the general fund departments. The only department that doesn't pay for it is the utility billing. And that's, that's paid for under the agreement. Other than that, the mayor's expense, we kept that at $1,000. Mayor Cooper was kind enough to say that he wasn't gonna spend any money. However, we do book to the mayor's expense in the mayor's newsletter that goes in the utility billing flyer. The flyer that goes in the utility bill. Sorry. Let's see, also in admin expenses, the demolition expense, one thing I wanted to articulate. Moving forward, as far as us making sure that we're staying on top of this and we're following the timeframe, that task is wanting to be delegated to the admin assistant this next year. So that way, it'll be on her calendar. She'll be following the timeframe. She'll be apprising Jennifer and I, code enforcement and building inspection, of what's going on with those structures. So that, that'll be tasked to her. And then, all the way down to 469.43, under miscellaneous expense. I told y'all that the plat filings came out of miscellaneous expense. I didn't know if I also articulated that easements that we obtained from different property owners as the plat things out, also those easements are filed under miscellaneous expense, and that's where, that's where we break that out. Other than that, transfers out goes to reserve. And so we anticipate putting $63,000 towards reserve this next fiscal year. Does anybody on council have a question about admin expenses? Everybody good? Okay, everybody ready to move on to library? Library is not, not a big revenue generator. However, Judy's done an excellent job of accounting for the people that do utilize the fee structure set up by council, which is the faxes, the scans, the print copies. And so, overall, in, in library revenue for this next year, we anticipate an increase of $800. And so, when you get your monthly revenue expenditures, you can see where Judy finds those numbers and where we're willing to anticipate that revenue. And that's, that's terrific on her part. Any questions about library revenue? Okay. Down in the library expenses, everything's pretty straightforward. Very good budget. Not a huge increase anywhere within it. Overall, we're going to see an increase in expected expenses, $1,453.36 out of library. But overall, the total revenue less expenses is only gonna be $653.36. So that's an excellent part, excellent job on Judy's part on making sure that she's really got a spending for this next year. Any questions on library revenue? Or library expenditures?
Electricity. I noticed it went up from the time I looked at it to the time.
I'm sorry, what were we looking at?
Electricity?
Electricity, yes, sir. So we're looking at revenue, we're looking at the revenue and expenditures today. And so, on the library, and...
I thought you said you got an air conditioner, so it should be cheaper.
Yeah, I did say that. I did say that. And so, we did put a new air conditioner in at the library. However, electricity has still gone up. So far, for this year, the library has expended, as of today, is $1,824.41. So the, what we anticipated for electricity for this next year, the $1,800, is not gonna be a good number. We had some, we had some...
I'm talking about natural gas.
That's natural gas.
Natural gas on the drive.
Oh, $5,500. Well, what about, okay. And that's why I had the ruler in my office when we were talking about this. Okay. So $5,400, okay, so $5,403, $54, $5,403.51 has been spent so far on electricity in the library. So that $5,500 is gonna be busted in the next month and week. So that's, oh, sorry, that's, that's why we increased it, is to try and live within there. Reason being is, the AC unit, you're right, we are gonna see some savings, but the AC unit is very new. And out of two old units out of this current year, we're going to, we're gonna just need to try and hedge our bets. And we have the revenue to, to go ahead and offset it. So we did bump it up. That way, we're trying to keep Judy within her, within her parameters. And she's gonna keep that AC at 80 degrees, so that way, that way patients come in, get their stuff, and they move on.
Talk about dressing day.
There you go. Very good. Thank you, Judy. Okay, what other questions do we have about, about expenditures on the library? That was pretty sneaky, I tried to sneak that in on the board.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next departments. We're gonna talk about the museum. Museum, of course, doesn't bring in any, in any revenue. It's not meant to be a revenue generator. It's meant to be enrichment for the community and to hold our history. Overall, museum budget, as far as expenditures are concerned, the total increase is $377. Does anybody have any questions on, on the museum budget? If everybody wants to turn to the fire department. Jennifer, myself, worked with Lieutenant Dockery, Lieutenant Thompson, trying to come up with a solid budget for this next year. We put it back into one. Main thing is, that way, we can look at it and get a better snapshot of what exactly is going on with the fire department moving forward, instead of having to flip the page and back and forth and have four pages to compare and contrast. So, put it back together. Main highlights that you're gonna recognize, identify is, overall, total revenues for the fire department are gonna be down $96,527.88. The main culprit is going to be in the insurance and private payments. With our new vendor A and D, we've identified that they're, they're based upon our current run call volume and our current payer mix. $520,000 is what they anticipate us bringing in. That's a very conservative number, but we've gotta start from somewhere. And to keep the department moving forward, $520,000 is what A and D anticipates collecting on EMS and transports for '16. The other part of the $520 is $80,000. And that'll be considered a legacy payment, and those are past due payments that when we get the data file from merch data and we move it over to A and D, they'll be collecting on those as well. And we anticipate that amount to be right around $80,000. So, that's gonna be the main culprit. Does anybody on council have any, have any questions about the revenues on the fire department side? Yes, sir?
Not really a question. You and I talked about the possibility of having a representative from A and D.
Yes, sir.
Come in and talk with us, talk to us at a city council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Explain how they, how they're gonna make things better.
And we'll, and we'll get with the rep, get a timeframe and see when they can come to a, to council meeting, hopefully in the near future, not somewhere off in the distance, and talk about things that we're working on to make sure that patient data's getting to them, that we're communicating and coordinating our efforts to make sure that we're getting home revenue that's due to the department for their call volume. Okay? And that was a, that was a good idea, Mayor. Yes, sir, Robert?
Who's gonna be the point of contact for the city with the A and B?
A and B is gonna be Lieutenant Dockery and Lieutenant Thompson. So primarily being Lieutenant Thompson. Want to congratulate him. His wife just had a baby, so they have a new child. Lieutenant Thompson is out. Lieutenant Dockery's here in their stead. So Lieutenant Dockery will be, be the point of contact with A and B. I will be the person that's going, what's going on? What are we doing? And asking the questions because I need to be informed. I'm gonna have oversight over the department. And I'll be needing to communicate to y'all how we're getting the legs back underneath the department and move forward. Okay? Any other questions about revenue? Okay. Before we look at expenditures on, on the fire department? Overall, revenues, revenues are gonna come in short. Main thing was to, to reduce expenditures as much as possible, but at the same time, maintain continuity within the department. Overall, total expenses are gonna be down $84,993.73. What that's going to do, the over and under, the total revenue less expenses is going to be, $20,000 is gonna need to come from the sales tax, property tax, things of that nature out of, out of admin to help take care of, of the fire department. And we have, and we have the funds to do it. It only makes sense to allocate it in that, in that manner. Does anybody on council have any, have any questions about the expenditures on the fire department? If not, then we'll move on over to the police department?
Real quick question, man.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Back on revenues, fire department.
Yes, sir.
Building permits.
Yes, sir. Okay, so building permits, $8,500 was not a good estimate. Let me get over to that page for prevention. $8,500 was not a good estimate for building permits. That was a bit optimistic. Currently, on our revenue, revenue and expenditure statement for '15, we've brought in $1,100.50. $1,100, $1,111.50, which is considerably better than the $150 that we were looking at a month ago. So Lieutenant Dockery, Lieutenant Thompson, Driver Engineer Powell have done a good job of getting invoices together, delivering to the businesses and the people that were in town and getting those done, as well as giving the ladies, the contractors that came into the work and left, getting ladies the address and getting everything together for us to bill out, so...
What, it says building permits. Is that, is that just associated with commercial projects?
Yes, sir. So typically, as far as fire code is concerned, we don't require anything in the home. As far as building, the building code official will inspect and make sure that all the smoke detectors are tied in, that they have that in their home. However, on the fire side, we don't go out and do home inspections unless somebody requests it and they want us to come out. And if they don't have smoke detectors or if they wanna make sure that their home's safe, we'll come out and do that. And that's a courtesy on the fire department's side. And that really doesn't generate any revenue. On the, but typically, fire code is more applicable and more, and applied on the commercial side. So yes, sir, building permits is gonna typically be for site plan review, for fire code issues, ingress egress for fire equipment, hydrant spacing to make sure that they're communicating engineering and public works and identifying where the hydrants are as related to, if there's a sprinkler system in the structure or required, that the FDC, the fire department connection is close to a hydrant on the property. Hood system evaluations and analysis, make sure that it meets the standard. That's over cooking appliances in a commercial occupancy. What am I missing, Lieutenant?
The...
Launch system, launch system review and implementation.
Does that also include existing structures where people come in and, and may lease a building and have to get a CO?
Yes, sir, I don't. And so, we're, one of the, one of the things that the guys have been doing on implementing the annual fire inspection program, that council approved the fees and everything, and us moving forward, not just on new construction, but existing occupant, commercial occupancies, was going out and doing the annual inspections. As they've gone out, they've identified commercial occupancies that don't necessarily have a certificate of occupancy with the C. There's still several that have fallen through the cracks, but as they move through and do their annual inspections, they'll, they'll be contacting those, those occupancies, letting them know, hey, you don't have a CO, you're not supposed to be in business. We can't inspect you until you pull that so we can do your initial inspection. So there's a process that's gonna be involved, but that's, that's really where we're headed.
So that, that number could actually change?
It could. It could actually be greater. It really could. I'm just basing, I'm being realistic as far as making sure the fire department's identifying and being realistic about its revenue. That's, that's where I'm coming from. It can be more, and, and we really anticipate, hope that it is. But right now, we're, we're trying to be real off, off current numbers.
That's all.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any other, any other questions, fire department relating before we move to PD? Yes, sir, Robert?
Do you want to clarify that on the, on the salaries there, every, everything you've cut down except for the overtime?
Except for the overtime? Yes, sir. So, on overtime, it wasn't being factored appropriately. So there's actually more overtime under FS, Fair Labor Standards Act guidelines. Is that right?
That's correct.
Hey! So, under those guidelines, there's, under shift pay, there's, there's so much overtime that has to be allocated per person. And that wasn't being, it wasn't being factored appropriately. So you're gonna see a significant increase. I mean, that's, that's almost $20,000 increase. But that's not beefing up overtime just willy-nilly. This is, that is specifically for...
12-hour shifts.
12-hour shifts and covering our overtime obligations for FLSA.
24 hours.
What'd I say, 12? We're on 12. It's 24, 24 is effective. It's the standard, it's the standard for the nation, so we're staying on 24. Even if we went to 12, that would still be the overtime rate. So there's really no good way to get away from it, whether you go to 48, 96, 24, 48, 12, and then you kinda do that nursing or whatever that is, where it's three days on, three days off, four days on, four days off. There's, there's any number of combinations, but the FLSA guidelines make it to where this, that is the appropriate amount of overtime. And there's, honest to God, there's no... And there's, honest to God, there's no fluff in this. So any overtime that the department needs, it's going to have to be cleared before they do it. And so that's going to make it kind of hard as far as there's going to need to be immediate communication and frequent communication, but to risk, to maintain trust in me, me and y'all, this is it. So that's where we are. Thank you, Robert. That was a good point. I forgot about that. Any other questions about the expenditures on the fire department's side? Okay. All right.
I want to make a comment. Thank you for being conservative with that.
No problem.
You guys have worked through that well.
You know what? It's, there's been a lot of conversation as far as how did we get where we are, and Lieutenant Dockery and Lieutenant Thompson and Engineer Howell have done a great job in communicating effectively and giving me what I need for us to be able to move forward. So it's been good on their part, so I appreciate that. If we go over to P D, five fifty. So with us eliminating the police department and moving to the county coming in, and Tim's going to run for sheriff.
That was a week ago.
So we do this, we do this all day. Tim wants to run in my office and go, oh, my God, what are you doing? The water tower fell down. Get out there, you know? So this is the opportunity to get to.
You know who's going to come out in the paper now, and that's going to...
This big dude. So, and I gave Rodney a pen that doesn't have any ink in it, so. But he's recording the whole thing, so. Okay. Police department this year, nine full-time employees, including Chief Barnes. The big highlights in the police revenue is, you're going to notice that the sixty-three, six-forty is not carried over to sixteen. Those S R O grant for the school this year. It wasn't awarded, it's not available this year, it's not going to be there. So that's the stark contrast we're seeing in the revenue on the police department. It's not anything where Chief Barnes has done a terrific job. Are there any questions outside of S R O grant for reimbursed salaries? Are there any other questions on revenue? Okay. We move on down into expenses. The highlights, if we take a look at sixty-nine, eleven machinery and equipment and expenditures on the police department. What we have here, if you'll hit on the memo, Jennifer. When we did the sticker, I call it the sticker game, it's really not a game, it's allocating citizens' funds. We did the sticker game last year, and we're trying to prioritize needs for the departments. One definite need was the police department needed tasers. Chief Barnes had articulated to y'all that the tasers that they had were off-brand, they were prone to failure, and for us to get compliant and not move to their, for the guys to not have a device or something that didn't function appropriately, and to have the name brand that does typically work, we needed to move a taser. That is one of their non-lethal options and to prevent the officer from carrying the weight of having to move their duty weapon, having to use a lethal option because their non-lethal option doesn't work, and to have that sense of comfort, as well as the assailant or whoever being subdued as opposed to terminated or whatever the term is. Tasers, taser's the way to go. This is affordable. Wasn't affordable last year without us increasing the property tax rate. This year, it is affordable. It was identified by council as being a wanted need. Went ahead and put it in, ready to move forward on that. And so that'll take care of us, take care of the city overall as far as liability, and take care of the consciousness of the officer down in the field as far as how they do their job and what all their options are. Yes, sir.
Have we had to use those in the past?
No. The brand that we had before, actually what took place is Taser Sudum. We went with a lower cost brand, Taser Sudum, and we got a court order saying that we couldn't even carry them. So there's been times that the officers need them or, you know, a taser, and we haven't had that. And as you see today in society, what's going on, if you don't give that officer that tool, then it could be a bad item on the department and the city. Any tool that we can give them to keep them having to use daily course is, in my opinion, well worth that extra tool.
I agree. I think between the cameras and the tasers, that puts you guys in a real positive position.
Let's see. A portion of the tasers is being paid out of seizure funds, so it's not wholly coming out of the general fund money. So that's good on Chief Barnes' part. Under capitalized items, keep moving forward with the vehicle replacement program that Chief Barnes has been doing such a great job with. The unit that's going to be replaced is one of the chargers, we're going to replace it with a charger. Currently, the police department only has five vehicles, and two of them are Tahos and the other three are chargers, so we'll place it in one of those chargers.
And we do have expedition, it's basically the four car crime scene equipment that is not driven every day. It was the two thousand and four that we got back in two thousand and four donated.
And we got the two numbers.
I was going to say.
It is two numbers, yeah.
We're not going patrol seventy-five with numbers yet.
Only in the store.
Well, I'm just glad we have opportunity to keep.
Yeah.
So besides those highlights, are there any other questions about the police department's Go up to salaries. So Chief Barnes is doing away with part-time detective, and he's proposed a full-time night sergeant. Reason, you want me to tell them or?
No, I can.
Okay.
The C I D position was utilized, the part-time position was harder, one, get someone to work part-time. But now what I've done is I'll use a daytime sergeant. He'll do C I D and patrol and supervise that day shift. What's going on now is I have one sergeant that is getting all the phone calls, typically maybe the one getting called out. So looking at bringing, taking that part-time C I D as a person of the year, adding a nighttime sergeant or supervisor, which should be a sergeant position.
All right. That's the highlights. Does anybody have any questions about police department expenditures?
How many officers do you run a night?
Well, in a perfect world, we try to have, we have a day shift, night shift, and a power shift. Power shift is four P to four A. Typically, what happens is that power shift is moved to day shift or night shift depending on, somebody has court, somebody has vacation. Currently, right now, we have an officer, I guess the baby thing's in the mood, we have an officer that they just had a baby a couple weeks ago. So that power shift is moved from night to day depending on what's needed. So if in a perfect world, nobody's taking off, you can have two officers or a portion of the night or until, well, four A M. And the day shift, the night shift from six A to six P, twelve-hour shifts, all of them twelve-hour shifts.
Yes, sir.
A question, it's not really specifically about police, but I noticed health insurance in several areas has dropped.
Yes, sir. So what's happened with health insurance this year? Working with Wellspring, they went out to market again for us. Like they said, they do find us the best option for the best plan for the employees. Blue Cross Blue Shield wasn't, through the benefit committee, Blue Cross Blue Shield wasn't the best option for the employee or the city. And so where insurance has gone down typically in most departments, instead of going up, Blue Cross Blue Shield, we were looking at anywhere from, you know, what, twelve to twenty percent increase in health insurance benefits. And it wasn't going to do the employee any good as far as adding a family or a child or on the city side either. So United Healthcare, name brand, everybody knows United Healthcare. Most facilities will allow you to utilize United Healthcare, move it to their plan. Their plan showed significant savings, also under the Obamacare plan. It's no longer, I told you the inverse yesterday when I met, it's not currently, it's based upon the employee and their history. What's going to happen in the new plan is it's the, where we fall under Obamacare, and so it's set up differently. And so that's where the increase is.
Flat fee.
It's more of a flat fee, but we did see some increases in certain employees. So, but it's a different, the rates structured differently because there were some employees that there wasn't really rhyme or reason, and it had to be some outside factor that we weren't. But that's, overall, we're looking at what's the savings. So savings to the city, savings to the employee, and so that's where we're going, because we're moving from Blue Cross over to United Healthcare. And those benefit committees made up of department directors.
There was also a benefit of us going, the ability to lock in another year if we changed the insurance companies.
Move away from age, where they set your rates based on your age and your other factors.
Yep. The, something's in the budget, are we going to do that same kind of thing like you did last year, where we divide money around?
The sticker game, yes, sir. So, okay.
Okay, then that way, Casey, and I have a question about machinery and equipment. What is, what's in there? I noticed you got a little flag on that says...
On the police, that's the tasers. That's the tasers we talked about.
I missed it.
Okay. Yes, sir. That's, so that was part of, that's based upon the sticker game from last year and what we can reasonably afford with what council identified as being needed projects.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on police? Everybody ready to move over to communications? Communications, four full-time employees. The only note of significance is under education and training. We doubled that up. The idea, well, under communications, we have a court supervisor and communications supervisor. We could go out to market, well, she's, let me back up. She's finishing her law degree. She's taking her bar exam. She plans to take her bar exam in December. The latest she hopes to be working for the city of Mount Austin is April. She wants to move on in the legal field. The opportunity for the city is, are we going to try and promote an internal candidate and work to that endeavor, or are we going to go out to market and see what's out there available? Currently, the current plan is to promote them within. What that's going to require is it's going to require more education and training on the employee's part, and so that's why the education and training is done, is to try and get them up to speed quickly. Does anybody have any questions about anything else in communications? Okay. If we would, we move on to five-five-two is municipal court, budget proposal. One full-time employee, and this is where the communication, court supervisor, this is where that salary comes from. If you'll notice the, things to notice within the budget from fifteen to sixteen, we reduced the revenue forty thousand. It's a better number, especially when it comes to traffic enforcement, step program, trying to keep the highway and the streets safe with traffic enforcement. Six hundred thousand is going to be a better number for us for this next year. And then transfers in, Jennifer, if you'll hit that right quick. This is a transfer in from court security for the court security officer. So bailiff, also called a bailiff, part of that money comes from court security to offset the labor. No other significant notes? Oh, whoa, okay, no. Councilman Jaska, we were talking about, he has a spreadsheet machine. So we're looking through this and he would quickly identify, oh, my gosh, what are you doing here? So court, state court cost is directly tied to a portion of the court fines. So with that, we were able to reduce, this was two-thirty yesterday across the board. It wasn't tied into this, there wasn't a formula or anything like that. We just went on down the road, so we dropped thirty thousand, and that's part of where that savings came from.
Can we drop that, mostly?
Sir?
Could we get out of that someplace?
Chief?
Daddy, not up in jail?
I don't know. I, yeah, that's messing with the state.
I don't think they earned their part.
Yeah. You know, of course, that number, if the number of fines increase in the amount of going to the state. Yeah, but, yeah, they've kind of really got it pretty strict on exactly what will go to it. And they keep, of course, they keep adding every year they can.
Okay.
So that was a good catch by Councilman Jaska, and so that's why we lay as many eyes on it as possible, especially people savvy as y'all are. And so total expenses, you're going to know, you're going to see that the reduction is strictly, directly attributed to the reduction in state court costs. Does anybody have any questions about expenditures on court expenses? Any questions on court expenditures?
Have collections fees, have the actuals gone down from the eleven thousand that we presented for last year, collection fees? Item sixty-seven ninety-two?
Yes, sir. So the collection fees for this year, can we get to that? So, yes, sir. So currently, what we've brought in, the collection fees is twenty-one hundred, twenty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. So.
So that is one of the...
Yes, sir. And so, success in expenditure, if it stays a little over eleven thousand, especially a fraction of it, that's...
I will tell you, too, that we've got notice from the collection agency that we've been for at least five years now, that they're actually, they've got a D O J contract, so they're going to be moving away from collections. So we're in the process now of looking for another collection company. Which could be a good thing, because if the collection company that we currently have has been more focused on other things and not necessarily focused on collections, they've been real great to us, but it's going to, it'll be a good thing that we look for in the collection agency.
Yes, sir.
Do we get to suspend licenses when we have no shows for municipal court?
The judge can order suspensions depending on what type of offense. I think so many driver's license, I'm not really sure. I don't really deal with that side of the court. There's probably an Ashley question. I'd hate to say that, you know, that would, I know it would have to be an order from the judge, and I'm not really sure that what it takes to get a license suspended. Typically, you know, if a license does get suspended, the state gets any money that's, you know, it all goes to the state to, I guess, get the S R twenty-two and get it reimbursed.
Sometimes that gets people to avoid and pay their fines, though.
Yeah. And, yeah, you know, the, yeah, sometimes, you know, sometimes they just drive, you know, typically. But the collection agency that we have, they've done a pretty good job, but I think that the, we're looking, seeking one now, and we've looked at one that's probably eighty percent of all the municipalities used, and I think it would be good to move on to another collection.
Any other questions about courts? Okay. We'll wait on Timely, but if y'all want to move on over to five-five-five, Parks and Parks and Recreation for this next year, we raised the anticipated revenue to seventy-eight hundred. Uh... Parks and Recreation for this next year, we raised the anticipated revenue to 7,800. What this is, is this is the reimbursement from the school district for a utility bill. So that's where that miscellaneous revenue comes from. As far as parks are concerned, we have one park's employee that's over grounds maintenance, trash, repairs, mowing, cleaning bathrooms. But then janitorial supplies are not janitorial supplies, but filling up paper towels and TP and soap and everything. Any questions on parks? There is one note. And so, down in the expenditure machinery equipment, what Steve would like to do, or, you know, what Steve would like to do this next year is put an electric fuel pump and a tank in the back of Rick's truck. That way, he's not having to run to the gas station to get more fuel for the mowers and weeders and all that. He actually has it with him out in the field, so.
The credit card will only allow us to fill up twice in one week. So we get locked out then. So we just fill it up, and then it won't be having to worry about it.
Any other questions on parks? All right. Next, the department will be the, well, it's not really a department, but the next page will be the senior center. Senior Center, there isn't any revenue to be gained in the senior center. Overall, increases have been modest. Contract services went up slightly. And under contract services, what's your note, Jennifer?
It's the same, we didn't go at all.
That's the, okay, so that's the senior center coordinator. Okay, thank you. So, does anybody have any questions about the senior center?
Did I understand correctly that they do do things, though, to resolve in them getting money?
Yes, sir.
They do, but they also pay for a lot of stuff that the city does not.
Including repairs to the buildings.
Air conditioning?
Putting in the new floor. They're going to be doing the front of it, replacing it to be more attractive.
There's no life of a senior.
But in bathrooms.
I was thinking that very much. And no life of money that the CDC can give?
No.
Oh, they should. They should.
No, I mean, it's self-sustaining as far as that, that part of it goes. I mean, they, the board of the senior center understands that the city may be limited in certain circumstances, and being a good tenant, that they're, you know, willing to chip in and help when, you know, the budget's been exceeded or something like that.
And when their air conditioning went out, you were able to get it fixed pretty quickly because you had the funds.
Yeah.
That's great.
I think the center and the city have a good working relationship. Y'all come over sometime.
I've used to, on time, for dealing with wells, but I said still.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to have a senior yet.
Yeah, I'm not a senior yet.
I might either. Oh, y'all come over, have a beer, visit with us. Good place to go. Any other questions? All right. Next category, community center. Revenue's been reduced to 3,000 based upon what the trend is. This current year, your day actual is 2,700, what we brought in. So 3,000's more accurate number for rentals. We do, there's a lot of community activities that happen in the community center. However, as far as rentals are concerned, for private parties and private events, 2,700 is all that's coming in.
Didn't we lose a lot of that money, though, because of being closed down for so long?
Well, that was the year before.
Oh, that was, okay.
Yeah, when the repairs happened and everything.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That was 14, I believe. Yes, sir. Yeah, so it was December 14. No.
It was December 13, but it was very important.
December 13, and then 14 is when we got the community center. So, community center was done pretty quickly, where, you know, fire department, police department, parks building and all that's taken quite a while. And then expenditures been reduced significantly, specifically managed repair buildings, because what we anticipated on spending was spent back in 15 on top of the repairs. So we'll reduce that down. Does anybody have any questions on the community center? Next department's going to be streets. Just like Canita showed you on EDC/CDC budget, that quarter cent, the quarter cent we have anticipated for revenues in the street department for next year has gone from 0.7 up to 1.19. And that, just like the sales tax that we anticipate for the general fund, this is all based upon current numbers, what we anticipate how to close out the year, the prior year. We don't bet on the come on sales tax, we bet on what we're pretty sure we're going to bring in the year before. Justin. What's that?
We adjusted Storms Sewers up to South Road signs.
Yes, sir. And so, yes, so, thank you, Steve. So what we modified is more and more of the signs around town are faded, difficult to read. It's not just a problem for the residents or somebody coming to visit, it's also a problem for public safety. So for public safety to be able to read the signs, we're updating them. If you'll notice, the newer ones also have the City of Austin logo on them, just part of the branding of the city. So move that money up here, managed repair Storms Sewers, we reduced it down. And you'll notice the money in, money out on the sales tax for the repair of the streets is down here. And we kept managed repair streets out of general fund, out of property tax, sales tax, or not sales tax. It is sales tax, in a sense. We kept that flat. And so, oh!
So there's an increase overall in 12,000, 12,000 in the streets.
Yeah, so an increase, yeah. So, there you go, thank you. I know there had been a question a month or two ago about making sure that we look at an analysis of going concrete curb and gutter versus staying with the county and doing chip and seal. I asked engineering to do an analysis. If you all want to hear that right quick, we can kind of go through that, because, and Steve has a list of approved streets for this next year. And so Steve and I can kind of talk to you all about that. Because the main thing is, we need to identify what we can reasonably afford and where are we in getting the streets repaired and replaced. Because we not only want to consider the streets, the shape the street is in, but we also want to consider the infrastructure underneath. And where, what kind of shape is it in? Have we identified that infrastructure at this point? And what are, you know, what's our risk with that?
I will tell you, on the streets, my plan is to cut off my total, and the total was 2,000 new blocks. Yeah, just walk you through the streets real quick. This top page kind of shows, the very top of the landscape page, shows you the history of what you've done so far with street repairs over the last four years. It's kind of a, knowing that there was minimal street repairs being done prior to 2013. And with this approved budget this year, you will have taken into account about 35,000 feet of street repairs. So it's almost seven miles of your streets have been repaired over the last four years. Which, if you look at the total, if you remember the, the page behind is the old colored sheet of the street repair ratings that were done back in 2013. This means after you finish this year's program, you will have gotten to 47% of the streets that were rated 70 or lower. So you've gotten to your top red and yellow sheets, or red and yellow streets. But, so, and then of your total, well, you've repaired about 27% after keeping on the current condition this year. So you've made, in over four years, you've made quite a significant stride from zero to, you know, almost 47% of the worst rated streets. And then, you know, at that current rate put out there, that means you can complete your 70 and lower streets in about 8.8 years, this will be year four of that, so. Showing that you are about halfway through, 47 kind of matched. And then if you do all the streets on your entire list, that means you go through one whole cycle of all your asphalt streets. It'll take you about 15.2 years to fund it at the current levels that you're funding, which is the 135 plus the 110 or so that you get in sales tax. So that's kind of where you've been and where you are right now. Frank asked a question about upgrading the concrete, and so I use the current prices that we're using for escrow and for recent substitutions out there, and looked at two concrete options below that helping with street repairs. One is a concrete surface, maintaining the bar ditches and culverts. And then the other one was a concrete curb and gutter, the Storms Sewer. And your unit prices for those two, you can see, is 165 for the concrete with the bar ditch and about 310 for the Storms Sewer and curb and gutter. If you use your current, if you use your current budget, which is about 254,000 dollars, you're doing approximately, I don't know if you can just listen until later, what's your current plan, how many feet? I forecasted about 90, I estimated about 9,700. But, so, I estimate about 9,700 that you would do this year. If you go to either one of these concrete options, you can do about 1,500 feet or 800 feet versus the 9,700 feet. So you're taking, I mean, you're getting a permanent, a longer term, 30-year roadway versus a 10-year roadway. But you're really cutting down how far your dollar will stretch at current levels. So, any questions?
Okay. What, my initial proposal and ideas were that we would spend half the budget on the present streets and doing them the way we're doing them right now, and then half the budget on cement with curb and gutter streets.
Upgrading existing streets or maintaining the current concrete streets?
Upgrading new.
Upgrading, okay.
Asphalt type streets, I'm now turning them to cement.
Turn them into concrete, okay. Curb and gutter or bar ditch, concrete bar ditch?
Curb and gutter.
Okay.
I want to fix, my idea is that I'd like to fix all the streets in town, at least have us moving towards a direction of having permanent repaired streets rather than just going out and doing the same thing they do every year, and go back in two or three years and we'll start repairing them again, you know, some of them.
The purpose of what I started was to build a road base. We didn't have a road base.
Right.
And that's what we're doing. We're building eight-inch and nine-inch road bases. Now, once you get your road base built, you can do, you can do, you can put anything on top of it, but you've got to have a base.
Yeah. Which is what, to split it in half and build, you can do about 400 feet a year, curb and gutter. You can just split that 819 in half.
Okay.
And that would be a half and half budget then. So you could do, you could do basically one block, one city block.
Okay.
Per year.
Okay.
Going forward.
Or as you continue to get more money into this fund, which we hopefully do, and as you continue to get, need less repairs on the other streets because you've now recovered a big percentage of them, then you would be, progressively, you could move more and more money into that fund and do, I know, of course, it costs more by then, so you could probably do less than a block.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing about going to concrete curb and gutter at that point, too, if you look at that last column in the middle there, is now you have to, most of your roadways are over some standard water and sewer.
Right.
So now you have to start accounting for, yep, your enterprise fund funding the water and sewer improvements that do that. And I estimated that per linear footage here, meaning that if you want to do that 400 feet, well, it'll be happening. But it would take another $100,000 a year just in water and sewer replacements to supplement that 800 feet. So you're talking another $50,000 a year out of the water and sewer fund to do a block a year. So if you're doing 400 feet, that'd be, what, 125,000 for streets? And you're doing another 50, 50,000 or so for water and sewer. And that's a 400-foot block. I mean, that's your allocation for a new urbanized profile on all your residential streets and go up downtown to residential, just the old section.
Is there any advantage, I know down on Jefferson and Rigsby where they actually have curbs, have asphalt, but curbs seem, those roads seem to hold up a little bit better than...
No, the curbs are actually coming out of brown now. The curbs are, well, they contain the drainage, so you don't have the freefall drainage on the edges that causes the rattle. So they'll keep it contained.
They're not spread out.
It doesn't spread out, so it does have, it takes a 10-year design to about a 15 or 20.
But if you look at the curb and gutter on those roads, because there's no support on the inside, other than the very small road base, the curve could start to either stand up on the end or roll over. So if you did rock curb and gutter, you'd have had a good snitch enforcement in the center. And we're probably doing four, four of the concrete two or something. The curb and gutter will be four at one. So at the same time, the airplane that's on, that was in the green list is now moving up into the yellow and red list. If you take Main Street, for instance, several years, I mean, two years ago, they were in good shape. Now it's become a truck ride, and it's completely coming apart.
Right. So is that one of the ones that we built a better road base underneath it or not really?
It has not, we haven't yet, we haven't yet. It's in this year's program.
So that would be an example of one where we did the repairs, now we're going to have to do the repairs again?
No, it's something there, Main Street, and that, South Main hadn't been touched. North Main is doing fine. But we've already fixed North Main.
Yes, well, South Main we did, not that many years ago.
I'll tell you, all the most common parts.
Sure, we did. It's probably been about four or five years since we did South Main.
Okay.
The only place that South Main's in really rough shape is down around John, Martin Duke, or it's partial all the way down.
Yeah, it's all the way down the river.
It's come apart.
Okay.
But there's no, if you put asphalt on the road base, it's not going to last. And that's the reason we're spending as much money as we are on road base. So you have, you know, a lot of cities got a good foundation, the same way with roads.
With the chip and seal that you've been doing these last couple of years, is that giving you the depth that you want? With the first application, does that give you the eight or nine inches?
And then rode over the first bunch, he said, it's still a good road. And we put eight inch, put eight inches of base in there, and they ground the existing asphalt into the base, and then they kept, if you notice, it took longer for it, before they covered it. They wanted to give good confection.
Like, I think it's Fox Street that goes like in front of the Methodist Church and then in front of the, that side of the...
Yeah, yeah.
What, is that, is that one that's been done right?
It hadn't had its last cover. The county stopped coats over there because it's too hot and the car was leaking through the bracket. the bracket. So they're waiting on the temperature to come down a little bit and then they come back to the top.
Okay. Give me a different example than the one that has been done.
If you take South Main, that was the first road we did.
North Main.
North, north of Van Austin Park.
All the way down to the end, on the end. You can see how that is with the, anything that's got new fresh black asphalt, there's chip seal on it, has been, that's the, you build the base, eight to ten, six, eight, ten inches, and then all the, the black, all that does is keep the moisture out. So your structure's in your base and then the chip seal is, all it's doing is deflecting the moisture off of the sides. So and so once we get that base built, there's lots of streets there.
Normally is one of them, not normally, but.
Well, anything, yeah, anything in blue and yellow.
That's how it's been done.
So that did give you, that one application chip and seal did give you the depth for the base that you want?
Well, the base is separate, the chip seal is just the waterproof, the waterproof.
But over time, as we work through this, then, once we've completed all this in a full round, then we could go back and consider concrete with the full.
Yeah, but at the same time, you're not going to be able to do them all at one time.
Of course.
Then you could take your base and actually put a two-inch coat of asphalt and it will extend your streets a lot longer than chip and seal, but it gives you time for you to start doing concrete.
Yeah, anything in the blue.
It's just a matter of time, just waiting.
Anything in the blue and yellow was done a couple of years ago, so those streets are done. You shouldn't be able to.
So if I go drive down them and they're smooth and nice, it was a good job, if I go drive down, that pothole is falling apart, then it's not a good idea.
You need to be asking questions.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be asking questions.
So what is your, what is your feelings about the concept of doing half a budget each way? I know it makes the other process longer.
Well, the only thing I look at is whenever I start reducing, citizens will say, well, you get my road, now you reduce it. And if I don't get them all built that way, then I have citizens on some streets.
What is the timeframe then till we will be there?
Well, the streets are actually, we're getting into the shorter streets and some of the streets, like in this year's, like Jefferson, Rigsby and stuff, all we've been doing is going there and fixing the lower areas and then we're going to chip and seal. They have a fairly good base, so we're going to go and try to preserve what's left there with the chip and seal. Same way on that extended Stent Road or Spence Road down on the north end of town, that is projected just to be a chip and seal. Now, if you go down Blassey Gate from Waco, you're going to go for, you better go forward that, turn that by. That's what I'm saying. This list is no longer accurate, the color, color, it's not.
These were ratings that going on four years ago, so.
And we had the heavy wet period, we had the heavy freezes, and a good road that were in a lower rating, now it's moved up into the red.
But that's something that we did cement with the curb.
Okay.
I guess I feel like I'm telling the people that, you know, that we represent, that we're telling them, we're, you know, we're fixing all the streets, but, you know, in three years, we'll fix that same street again, or five years, we'll do it again. Okay. In the past, we've always been able to do them every two or three years because that's when they wore out again.
Well, that's because we're back to.
I understand, you're trying to fix that process.
Yeah, there's no base there. Because this type of plate is just like a sponge. If it's hard, I mean, if it's dry, it's hard. If it's wet, it's just real spongy. And the road, when a road's sponged, that asphalt's going to come apart, it's going to alligator real fast.
I guess, like I said, my biggest statement is, if you look at most of the council, we all live in the, where we've got cement streets right in front of our houses. And we need to do that for the, start doing that for the rest of town. Even if we can't do it for events.
You know, it's, I'd like to, it'd make my job easier, but at the same time, I've got to be realistic. I've got to get the existing roads where the people can drive.
If you can go down to the bottom two roads building, I can answer your question. If.
For this year or what?
Yeah, this one, yeah, the bottom two roads here. If you cut, this is assuming the full budget was done, your concrete roads. Years to complete everything down to the seventy percent is forty-eight point seven. So if you can commit half of your budget to concrete streets, it'll take you ninety-six, ninety-seven years.
So I won't have to worry about. I need to, I need to, you won't have to worry about.
Well, I take that back. I was looking at the concrete varditch. It's ninety-one and double that.
Yeah, a hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty-two years.
Hey Billy. Honest to goodness, as far as doing concrete streets, curb and gutter, to keep from falling into a bad situation where we have have and have nots that are getting concrete curb and gutter in older parts of town, we're probably better off here in a couple of years going towards a bond to get sections of town done in concrete curb and gutter and bonded out over time. And that way, we're getting larger slaws done, we have the, we have the possibility of hitting a lower cost if we do a larger section of town through a bond than if we piecemeal it out. Because if we piecemeal it out and they're only doing a block at a time, then we're going to run into an issue where they're going to come in, the cost is going to be high, but we're only going to get, you know, just a little bit done.
Because of that cost, five, three down, four, six, that's just.
So it would be also safe to say that as these numbers, I mean, as the city grows and the tax base, you're going to get longer, I mean, you're going to build, cover more space depending on the amount of that.
Well, that tax base and then like, you know, most, most cities, the Richardsons, Blanos of the world, when they need storm, they need drainage improvements, they float a bond, you know, they float a bond election.
Right.
So the citizens buy into it, you just have to identify the project area and go forward. And that way you get, you know, I know Richardson is currently, they just floated, they're going to be floating in November, seventy million dollar bond. So at seventy million dollars, you can get a great, a very big section of this done.
Can we get that? We did one more town today.
But I mean, when I got here, there was a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, I think it was, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then setting in that contingency all the time and there was huge. So that's probably, the position I started is let's get a road base, and I've got Frank the same thing. We build a road base and then we've got something, we build on top of that.
And eventually, you know, all your new streets are going to be curb and gutter because that's what you approve from this point forward. So any of these new subdivisions coming in. So then it becomes a downtown issue of, you know, approving bonds or approving a, you can do a special assessment or whatever it is for people that need that roadway. But as you build the new subdivisions and get the tax in, you start really generating tax base with new, you know, the adblock tax, then all of a sudden.
Yeah, I guess, remembering how this town works, we've forgotten all this for three years.
Well, I understand.
Three years, now we'll be going into crap.
Want anything to do that takes the streets out?
I mean, as long as I'm here, I'm going to.
Okay. And I'm always going to keep pushing for it too. And I would love to do that, I mean, there's some serious drainage issues, you know, right there on Dallas Street, Big Culver, Church, you know, and right off of Fulton, where it comes all the way down from the Mexican Restaurant, where those through the backyards, there's a lot of water that comes down through these streets. I'm surprised you don't get more house flooding calls than you sell them.
It's still in the, it's still in the.
It's still, it's still the goal. I mean, that is still the goal. It's just, I don't know that you're in that growth mode, you know, it's what Tom Frank and Steve all the time, doing your water and sewer budgets are great as you get to that saturation point where you can sell more water, then you have new accounts coming in, your water rates actually start coming down because you've got that. You're not, you're not to that growth stage yet and that same thing is going to happen with your streets and drainage. You're going to get to that saturation point where all of a sudden it's a lot more affordable to take on that.
My recommendation, stay with the same program. Let's make it through another cycle, try to get back to the citizens for another quarter cent vote here in another year. This is the third year of implementation. Reason being is we want to bind bulk, we want to build a bond, we want to do something special and that way we get as much done as possible for the best buck. And I'm glad we did that analysis because we need to be looking at it moving forward. But the main thing is we're still working on the infrastructure coming through town, so we're going to get that established and get a good life for that before we come in and start building concrete over time. That's just my recommendations there. So are there any other questions or anybody else have anything on streets?
The rate of growth that they're projecting in North Texas, I mean, we're, I mean, we're talking about a concept in our very near future of being able to do what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
So I don't think this is, you know, twenty years down the road unless something just drastic happens to the economy, which could happen, but.
Very welcome.
Yeah, and I mean, it's just visiting with different people just this past week. I mean, there's companies coming down left and right and honestly, right now, everybody talks about nobody can keep up the growth in North Texas. And Van Austin's just starting to, you know, the bonds that we've approved or the stuff we've approved for getting utilities and stuff to the west side, I mean, that's just the beginning of, that was needed for the developers and now that we've already seen the developers hit the ground running on their interest in Van Austin. And I mean, we're just starting to see the starting point.
You're in it.
Yeah.
When it starts coming up. Exponential growth.
It's like more business you give, this, when it's first started, it was a hundred and five thousand dollars and now we're at one nineteen. The more sales tax you give, that fund's going to keep building and we'd have the money fighting. And we may project, be able to end this sooner than what we projected.
So Frank, talk about the loan.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so the things to note on the street department budget is on the interest expense, this is the last year on paying for the white elephant pothole truck. So this is our interest expense, it's down from last year. However, our final payment is up from last year. And this will pay off the pothole truck. Steve has some ideas, we haven't been able to sell the thing, we've put it on Renee Bates a couple of times. What we're looking at, what one of Steve's ideas is to take the bed off, put it in the yard, put it on Renee Bates and catch there's a municipality that doesn't necessarily need the whole truck, but needs the bed. And then it would have the utility of Steve possibly being able to put a dump bed or something like that on the truck and have more utilization. We haven't incorporated that, we incorporated that into the budget for him to make that move, we want to get paid off first. But that's, that's one of his ideas and I think it's.
We need one. I mean, what we've got is ninety-nine, ninety-eight foot glass of elbow.
Yes, sir. I'm honest to God, I don't remember what year it was, it was already, because it used units.
I think it's nineteen ninety-nine.
Sounds, that sounds about right. It was clean and in good shape, but.
You're right.
It's getting up, it's getting up in years. Any other questions or statements about the street budget? The next page we move on to is the tax rate with, where it has the breakout from maintenance operations and interest in the same. The budget that I bring to you this year, council, we're going with a custom rate for 2015. I'm not requesting that we raise the tax rate, but that we keep it the same. And that rate is point one six two six three nine.
Say it again.
Point six one two six three nine. What did I say? One six. What did I say? One six. Okay. The custom rate is point six, I ignore the six. The custom rate is, for this year is point six one two six three nine. If we don't have any, any other comments or questions on the budget that's been proposed, then I turn it back over to the mayor for, to poll the council as far as the proposed tax rate.
And so as for the proposal to keep the tax rate the same at zero point six one two six three nine, approval or disapproval, yea or nay?
It's a yea or nay vote, so you're asking individual council member.
And so, Ms. Kelly?
I, well, definitely yea. I saw comparisons with other cities and they're very comparable and it'd be great if we could just.
Mr. Moore?
Say.
You're saying yea?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Taster?
Yea.
And the.
I would say I'd like to lower it, but, you know, given our circumstances or budget, I think we don't increase it up.
And the next, next item would be to set public hearing dates.
Yes, sir. Okay, so married council, we've got a calendar here in the, in the bottom right corner. Our next opportunity to have our public hearings for the tax rate is our regular meeting next Tuesday, the eighth, at six thirty P M. And then we can have our first public hearing. The next opportunity would be the fifteenth, and that'd be the Tuesday after that. And you could have it anywhere y'all wanted as far as five, five-thirty, six, six-thirty, whatever's good for y'all that you need to have that second hearing, please. If the fifteenth's good for y'all, then we have opportunity to set the tax rate and have the record, the record voted on the twenty-fifth. And I know that's a Friday, however, we could actually do that if you go into the ballgame or you have other, other plans that Friday, we could do it as early as five o'clock. We could do it, I mean, we could do it anytime you want to, we could do it at lunch, but.
Unfortunately, the fifteenth does not work for me.
Okay. The fifteenth doesn't work, let's see, is it three days apart, seventy-two hours apart? Okay, so the eighth. I wouldn't say that we'd do our first hearing on the fourth, because then that.
I have to publish on the fourth.
Okay, so Jennifer's going to need to coordinate with Rodney as far as publishing the proposed tax rate. So we can do, we can do the eighth, is the eighth good for everybody because we're going to have a regular council meeting? Will everybody, will everybody be available? I know we don't have to call four, but will everybody be at the next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. We can do, we can do the eleventh, but seventy-two hours, it'd have to be at six thirty P M on the Friday. So that could make it tight if anybody's going to the ballgame, so Robert's making a face. Okay. How about the fourteenth, this is the Monday.
I can't do that one.
Can't do that one. Okay, what's, what's good for you on that next week?
It's nothing that week.
Nothing.
The twenty-first would be my next available.
Okay, that Monday, the twenty-first, is everybody okay and available on the twenty-first of Monday at five P M? Would that be okay with everybody? That fit, will that fit our timeframe? Russell, now Russell's making a face.
It'll be fine.
Okay. We can have a quick second hearing at five P M. But the main thing is with publication and have it on the eighth, that way everybody has an opportunity to come to the council meeting, be heard, you know, the gallery will be there. It's only.
You said the eighth is the first one?
Yes, sir, because that'll be our regular council meeting. And then, so the twenty-first is a Monday and we could do it at City Hall at five P M if y'all wished. Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then we can still do the adoption date, that Friday, the twenty-fifth, if everybody's available, we can do that at five P M. Would everybody be okay on that Friday at five P M? The twenty-fifth. And that'd give you time, if it's an away game, it'd be time to get to the away game.
It's a way at S and S on that day.
On the twenty-fifth. And S and S is what, thirty? On the twenty-fifth, and S and S is what, thirty, forty minute drive?
Yeah, it's a bit of forty-five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that Friday good, the twenty-fifth?
We did that earlier, yeah.
Okay, if we do it at five, Billy?
I don't.
Okay, no obligations, Russell.
You gonna send out all these times?
I will send out all these times, I will make sure that my service isn't doing a bunch of weird stuff like, like it did, that was, uh, that was kinda odd, because thankfully Chief Barnes said, I didn't do anything, and so I went back to it, and it was, and everything was in the mailbox inside the rec room at it. Um, Tim Lee, was that Friday at five P.M.?
Yes, yes.
That's good, okay, great, um, what else were we missing, sir? We've got the tax rate, we've got the hearing dates, and take the record vote, the record vote will be on the twenty-fifth, right?
No, we took the record vote, the proposed, which he did.
Okay, so we already did that, okay, if, uh, it's your, it's still yours, sir.
All right, so then, um, the, the public hearing dates then, uh, the first one will be on September eighth at six-thirty, that'll be the regular council meeting, the second public hearing date will be at five P.M. on September twenty-first, Monday, September twenty-first, um, at City Hall, and then, uh, on Friday, September twenty-fifth at five P.M., um, then we can, uh, adopt the tax rate, we can.
Yes, sir.
Vote to adopt. So, and I guess we're all in agreement on that then, anyone object to those dates? Okay, I hear no objections.
And please let me know, I'll, I'll send them out, if anything happens to your schedule, please let me know, so that way we don't get into that drop-dead, uh, area right here, okay, um, that way we can make, make any adjustments that are necessary, because I know that things come up in everybody's schedule.
The meeting to adopt on the twenty-fifth, will that also be at City Hall?
Um, yes, sir, it can be at City Hall, that'd be, that way you get in, get out, and that way you move on to the game, and, and, you know, nobody's sitting outside honking at you, so, um, yes, sir. Any, not if there's a closing comment or anything like that, okay, yes, you choose.
Well, let's see, uh, well, we've, uh, we've completed the agenda, except for adjournment, does any, does we need a motion to adjourn? Or, and second, Mr. Taster? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, we are adjourned at.
Yemenus?
Yemenus. Eight thirty-two P.M.